So before we start. That are playing music together.
Have you ever heard?
No. Well, it's called a.
Yes, I will. Commissioner Arasi?
Here.
Commissioner Haylen is absent. Commissioner Sheard?
Here.
Commissioner Jensen?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Jenkins?
Here.
Chairperson Carl Darling?
Here.
Perfect, and I just wanted to note for you that I do know Terry Smith is not listed here as one of the commissioners on the agenda. It was due to using a template we previously had. Moving forward, your name will appear on the agenda here.
He is official.
He is official, he has been sworn in. Yes.
Give me a chance to stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thanks. At this time to address the commission. If you wish to address the commission.
That's correct. Correct.
Yes, Mr. Commissioner. Today we are discussing but not taking action on two ordinances. The ADU ordinance will not be discussed tonight because the Development Review Committee has not had a chance to discuss it prior to it coming to the commission. So we'll follow protocol that way. We do have the food truck village ordinance and the oak tree mitigation ordinance. DRC has discussed both and so now it's an opportunity for the planning commission to weigh in. The decisions on these to recommend to moving on to the city council will occur in the October meeting. DRC made some comments and such.
Are you going to hear those?
Yes. So tonight we have Lark McNeil on Zoom who will be presenting. She's a consultant, planning consultant to the city and she will be presenting the food truck village ordinance. She did participate in the DRC discussion, so she'll hit the highlights. You have the texts in front of you and if you'd like, we'll try and flash it on the screen, you know, the particular passages that are discussed. Secondly, we have Scott Hubbard in the audience tonight. He is one of the proponents of a food truck, creating a food truck village that has caused this ordinance to be initiated. And so he'll want to have the opportunity to comment as well. Or not. So Lark, you ready to present the food truck village ordinance?
Yes, Wes, I am, thank you very much. Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Lark McNeil, I work for Inner West Planning Group. I'm a retired land use planner, I've worked for two rural counties and several small cities in Northern California. I am very passionate about small communities and trying to help them to grow and thrive as well as protecting whatever their individual character is. You will notice that some of the language in here is really designed. Well, I'll get into that later, but I really have some particular focuses for this particular ordinance. First of all, I'd like to point out some highlights that Wes mentioned in his memorandum to the Development Review Committee. First of all, this ordinance would allow mobile food trucks or villages with a minor use permit in most residential zones. And they are listed at the top of the first page of the ordinance. They would be allowed in the office, neighborhood commercial, limited commercial, highway commercial, commercial light manufacturing, intensive commercial, neighborhood mixed use, corridor mixed use, intensive industrial, airport business park, and open space zone districts. Additionally, a mobile food vending village is defined as more than one mobile food vending vehicle parked on private property for more than one hour at a time. This ordinance is not applicable to public property. We use the term food truck village because that's what's commonly used in other communities. We just need direction from the commission, do you want to call this a food truck court or village? It's really a material, it's what your pleasure. Some of the main considerations are separating this type of land use from other uses and particularly residential. One of the things we'd like the commission to discuss is how close would you like mobile home food villages to be located? In this ordinance, we're suggesting that they be a minimum of 200 feet apart and that would be measured from a property line to a property line and not from mobile food truck to mobile food truck. Because mobile food truck on an empty lot is going to park, you know, different places, different times, depending on individual circumstances. So I think that would make it easier to define for staff and the public. The proposed operating hours are from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. This would be allowed on private property owner only with barriers as needed to protect these uses from the streets and the public right of way. There's a variety of uses, excuse me, barriers that can be used anywhere from a K rail that can be used on a more permanent basis to pylons that could be put in and taken down according to business hours. One of the conditions proposed is that the site must be empty and paved and not interfere with other commercial uses. And here I'd like to point out the need for development standards for a mobile operation. When you develop convenience market and office building or what have you, there are development standards in the zoning ordinance that say this use will be located and the setbacks. It makes provisions for landscape buffers along the property lines. It dictates where the parking lots will go. And these become barriers which separate the use from the streets and helps protect a private use from the public just entering the site for whatever reason. Therefore, I think it's important that the planning commission consider establishing development standards that will help keep the folks from just driving anywhere onto a vacant lot and accessing it anywhere from a public street without regard to what could be going on internally on the site. As well as helping to define where traffic can go in and out of what is essentially a vacant lot. There's conditions in there that garbage must be controlled. We anticipate that the mobile food vendor village will have a metal storage container on site that could contain the trash trucks and the hand wash stations at night. We also want a condition in there that says that no alcoholic beverage sales, illegal drugs, or other sundry items be allowed for sale. That the focus be kept on selling mobile food items. And we're also suggesting one mobile storage container on site, no greater than 200 square feet, which would be 10 by 20. Just for your informational purposes, I did contact Conex West, which sells and rents those metal storage container units. They sell them for approximately, the used ones for approximately $3,500 and they sell the new ones for about $6,800. They charge about $300 to bring them from Oakland and put them on site in Oroville and would charge the same to come and pick them up and take them back to Oakland. The current rent for these units for a 20-foot long container is $119 a month and the current rent for a 40-foot container is $149 for four weeks. These units are also nine and a half feet tall. The commission should consider if they want a used metal storage container to be used on the site, these used ones will have some dings and dents in the paints because they have been used and they will also have painted markings on them indicating who the owner was at the time that the unit, the storage unit was originally used. Whereas the new units are painted a solid white, off-white, or a beige and there's no commercial lettering on it. It's just a solid paint color. And I think that that would be more, A, visually pleasing and it would also provide an opportunity for the operator to use that as a blank sign canvas for that particular mobile food village. You'll see some references in the draft that we did base this ordinance on the city of Santa Rosa's mobile food village ordinance. They have a pretty successful ordinance in Santa Rosa. We also took a look at the city of Alameda, Oakland, San Bernardino, city of Fresno, and Sacramento. At this time, I'd like to conclude my presentation and entertain any questions from the commission.
So let me add just a little bit. A couple of the items that the DRC discussed in detail was the separation requirement. In here, it's 300 feet from any residential use and 200 feet from another approved mobile vendor. But then the question becomes, should there be a distance requirement from restaurants and concentrations of restaurants, especially in the downtown? We have had input from at least one restaurant owner who would not like to see food trucks appearing, competing with their own services. Secondly, it was discussed, the paving. The ordinance draft says that the proposed location is on an improved property that is entirely paved. The building official and the DRC feels that that may be excessive, that paving should only be required in areas where the food trucks and/or parking and people actually are. So that the whole site, let's say if it's not used, does not need to be entirely paved. The paving is important for building, for ADA, and for fire access in an emergency. So paving was considered to be quite important by those that attended the DRC. I questioned the $5,000 deposit for the Conex box, the container, but I don't think there was any particular response on that. I'm trying to remember Warren whether there was. And then what Lark has mentioned about the site plan and the operational plan and traffic flow and everything like that would have to be defined as part of any permit process in detail. So those are some of the outcomes from the DRC meeting. Warren, I don't know if you had any other particular comments from that, you're the only other person here that was at that meeting.
Now, the one question that I had had was about the paving, but it was explained that it had to do with a lot with a liability for the city, for emergency services and whatnot. And that paving can include not just asphalt, but it can include.
Yeah, chip seal and other kinds of less expensive.
Less intrusive on the landscape, yeah, so that was fine. Remind me why we had a separation between other, between food truck villages? Not that I anticipate that this is going to be an issue, but.
Lark, did you have any thoughts on that?
The only reason that is there is because it was included in the city of Santa Rosa and I believe it was the city of Alameda. And though, first of all, those areas are much more densely populated. These types of uses are very popular and they were trying to keep, I guess, sort of like some breathing room in between the villages. In those areas, though, the villages can include up to 20 food trucks at a time and you may wind up with a couple of hundred people there, depending on what food truck is there. This is just a draft ordinance. We're going to make it whatever the city wants it to make, whatever suits your needs. The only thing that I'm probably really concerned about are the development standards that, A, will make it easier for staff to enforce the conditions of approval of the use permit. Because I've been there, I've done that, when you have someone who doesn't want to adhere to the conditions of a use permit, it eats up an enormous amount of staff time. And that would explain why I had put in there a, let's see, as a condition that a deposit of $5,000 would be required to guarantee that the storage unit would be removed from the site when and if that use was discontinued. Because I did work in communities where I did have to go to, along measures in order to remediate a use that had discontinued and we needed to get the storage unit or an illegal sign or what have you off the property. And it took a lot of time and once we started implementing cash deposits that were large enough that it encouraged compliance with the conditions of approval, staff's job just became a lot easier to get the owner to comply. You'll also notice in this ordinance that it says that the owner of the property is the one responsible for making sure that whatever barriers are installed or maintained, that the trash is kept picked up. It's going to be a real difficult problem if we allow the individual food vendors to be responsible for whether or not the barriers are up, whether or not the trash cans are up, whether they get put away at night, whether or not the hand washing station has adequate soap and water in it. We need one entity responsible for maintenance of these operating mobile food villages.
Yeah, and I think that's important to distinguish, that we're not looking at rules for the food trucks themselves. We're talking about rules for the landowner, the person who would set up the village for them to come, right? Yeah.
And is it not a parking lot? It has to be an empty lot or is it, can it also be a parking lot?
That's something that you can determine.
We actually have two applications for mobile food vending from the Hubberts. And each of them has three sites picked out, so it looks like they have a health certificate for one truck each, but they'd like, and one is a Mexican food truck and one is an American food truck. And you can correct me if I misstate here. But, and they have three potential sites picked out where they'd like to move their trucks to at their own discretion. One is the site, the vacant unpaved site up by, in front of Home Depot at the corner of Third and Nelson. The second one is two parcels south of the Walmart down on South Feather, also unpaved. And the third one is the Arco Mini Mart at the corner of Feather River and Highway 160 across from the Maverick. So these would be locations that these food trucks might frequent. And so there is a mobile food vending permit for two individual trucks. But we are waiting to issue those until, and to discuss conditions of those until we have more discussion about this food truck village.
And it's from 7:00 to 10:00, you drive on, you can drive on at 7:00 AM and you have to leave by 10:00? Is that the way that works or do you stay, does your food truck stay on site?
The way the ordinance is currently drafted, the food trucks would leave at night.
But the metal containers are allowed, the way it's drafted, they're allowed to stay?
Correct.
So we could potentially have permanent metal containers in the areas where we have these food truck villages? The way it's written now.
Correct, and that's why I've asked that they have a $5,000 deposit to make sure those are removed when that particular use discontinues on the site. So the city isn't left with a metal storage container sitting on a vacant lot or in a parking lot for, when the use that is associated with has been discontinued.
That's the, this is the hardship of more transient vehicles like this. To get left, they're risky.
Food trucks are required to have a canteen location, a place where they can go at night to park to keep all of their perishables cold, to refit, to clean, that sort of thing. So I believe it's the Health Department permit. And state law requires you to define where your canteen location is going to be. So the trucks would not stay on site at night, they'd go to this canteen location.
But you have to have the metal container to have the food truck? Okay, that's just an option that a lot of people use?
Yes, if you want to have a secured place.
I'd like to hear.
I didn't think a voice shouting from the galley would be appropriate, so I thought I'd introduce myself. My name is Scott Hubbard. I own the Arco AM PM at 410 Orodam Boulevard in addition to other various properties. I'm not feeling particularly well today, so I thought it was important to appear nonetheless. So to answer your question, no, we don't need a canteen, we don't need the container. The vehicles do need to be removed under the local ordinance every night to be cleaned and food prepared for the following day. It does create an interesting question, though, is what if your canteen is located on the site? So in those instances, do you have to pull it off and then pull it on before working in the canteen and cleaning it off? So that's something that the new ordinance should probably consider.
The ordinance does not include that because that question is addressed by the county environmental health department. The city doesn't have jurisdiction of that question.
Then that might have been where I read it. Any other questions while I'm here?
I have a question. Are we talking about a roaming food court in the city or are we talking about a specific location for this food court?
The applications that we have currently are for a roaming food court.
Actually, with mine, we wanted to put it on Home Depot, on the Home Depot lot. That's the only spot we'd like to put it. Our restaurant, excuse me, our gas station serves as a good location to shake down our trailers to make sure everything is proper before we set them up over there. It also serves as a viable canteen. So ideally, when this is all said, no, what started this is we just wanted to put multiple food trucks on a parcel. We didn't want to do a village, but this is the path that would naturally flow from it.
I mean, I don't, if you're going to do a village, I mean, in a designated area, I mean, if you're talking about putting up, you know, white picket fence barriers and putting Conex boxes, I mean, I think that's an awful lot. I mean, if there's a site that's identified a property owner who is going to be charging the vendors money such as maybe where Ratchett Burger has their trailer by A1, right? I mean, it's becoming more of a very esoteric operation if you're going to start putting Conex boxes and paying deposits and. I mean, if you want to identify a location to have this, is this for one guy or two guys in the trucks? Or you're going to be having multiple trucks in and out to come to your, come to our food court and sell your stuff? Fridays it's ribs, Tuesdays it's tacos, Wednesday it's steak sandwiches. I mean, are we having a bunch of different vendors or are we having two vendors? Are we having multiple sites, a couple sites? Are they, you understand what I'm asking? Is it seems to me like, you know, if they want to go where the Old Tractor Supply is or at the Home Depot lot, that should be something that's discussed with Home Depot. And Home Depot, if they want to do that, they provide amenities for the vendors. I don't know about having a food truck, you know, store propane tanks on a site in a Conex box at a $5,000 deposit. I don't see that as being an answer. I don't know. Maybe I'm not understanding what it is.
My impression is that if you're going to have a lot of food trucks, let's say six food trucks or something like that, then you would want a Conex box. If you're, if you have just two or three, you may not need that. You may find some other way to move, you know, the tables and the umbrellas or whatever it is that you set out, the trash cans, the propane tanks, whatever. This ordinance starts a village by definition at two trucks. That may not be an appropriate number, it may be a larger number, three or four or something like that.
20.
So that would be something for this planning commission to also consider. There are a number of locations right now on Olive Highway and other places where there are more than one food truck at the cur- and other places where, uh, there are more than one food truck at the current time. Uh, we don't have any ordinance to prohibit that, um, nor to permit it. So, uh, it becomes a code enforcement issue. So we're hoping that this ordinance also clarifies, uh, all, all of those things as well. So I'm not sure if that's an answer to your question.
No, I'm just trying to figure out if, if we're going to try to make food courts in multiple locations? Or are we going to try to say, okay, here's our food court location? And everybody comes and, you know?
Currently.
You know, if you got 20 trucks, right? They all, you know, we're there every other Thursday or whatever. And you have a designated area. This is, everybody knows to go to the food court on Olive Highway and there's going to be five or eight trucks there daily or weekly or whatever it is. Instead of, you know, are we going to be Home Depot one week? We going to be at Truck Supply one week? We going to be at Walmart one week?
We may be in all those places at once. We've had interest from at least three landowners that, uh, are interested in putting, uh, food truck courts.
To, to me, this seems like we're establishing the zoning for anybody, anybody that would like to take the risk of, of opening one.
Yeah. Well, I mean, some of the risks should be...
Just like a convenience store, like, uh, this, these are the rules. If you want to do it, you could do it here.
Okay, so then we're putting the owners on the property owner who's going to be allowing the food trucks?
That's what this sounds like to me, yeah.
That they would, that they're the ones who would apply for the permit, right?
Who?
That the pro- the property owners.
The property, okay, so, so then...
So if you had a roving food truck to three locations, you'd have three permits, one for each location, correct?
Correct. I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I obviously didn't explain that very well in the introduction. The city is not establishing mobile food trucks. This ordinance is a way for individual property owners to obtain, um, approval from the city to have multiple food truck, um, trucks on property that they own within the confines of a use permit approval. And some, um, of the interested parties have indicated that they wanted to have food trucks at two or three different locations, but at different times of the day. The same trucks would move from one loc- from location A to location B to location C throughout the day based on whatever their operational needs were, where they saw the market.
Has, has anybody, uh, said anything about possibly keeping the historic downtown district out of this?
You have a lovely historic downtown. I was very impressed at how intact the architecture is there. I would certainly not want to see any mobile food trucks, but within the vicinity...
I'd like to see, uh, I'd like to see a special permit only.
Okay.
Uh, but that's, you know, up to everybody. And i- is a lot across, across from us, is that part of the historic downtown?
Yeah.
Yes.
It is.
Because I'd, I'd like to see that exempt.
Well, we could have a distance from...
You know, I'd like to keep that.
Restaurants.
Yeah.
The brick and mortar restaurants. So what is the traditional, or is there, just to protect?
But special permit, so the salmon festival type.
Yeah, now, does this have anything to do with special events, this ordinance? Or is that totally different? Like, because salmon festival, we, you know, everything changes. Of course.
Right. Um, this is, this is not a special event permit.
Special event permits get their own permit, or special events get their own permit. Salmon Festival, for instance, and they tell us that they're going to have food trucks at location A, B, C, D, et cetera.
And to clarify, as written, uh, this is not permitted in a downtown district.
Okay.
Is that because are we mixed use downtown?
M X D, yes.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Yeah, I, I just really want to always protect the brick and mortar restaurants. And so what would, if we did, you know, you have to be this many feet away from a brick and mortar restaurant, is there precedent on that with other jurisdictions that have wanted to protect? And what's that distance?
It depends on what, um, you want to establish, but you can establish that. I would, I don't know that there's an average, but a city block is about 300 feet. So if you...
Which would be reasonable, that's 300 feet is a, is a block.
May I, may I pine on that for a second?
Please.
Uh, two points that, when I read that. Um, number one, if you do go down that route, I'd suggest making it, um, reflect cuisine of a similar nature. For example, I know down on Oro Dam, there was a, a food truck that sold ribs. I think it's in the Food Max parking lot. And another, uh, restaurant, a brick and mortar, opened up in that same area using that parking lot that sold ribs. So you had a rib joint competing with a rib joint. Obviously, the brick and mortar didn't like that, complained to landlord. Landlord chased the, the food truck away. Now, let's assume that it wasn't a rib joint in the parking lot, but Thai food or noodles or Mexican or something along the line. Um, would it be unreasonable for the rib joint to say, "I don't want Thai food sold in the, in the parking lot. I don't want pizza, I don't want noodles, I don't want a varying food truck of a different type"? Just because you have a brick and mortar restaurant, I don't think should give you a license to exclude everyone's choice for that particular lunch meal. Um, the second thing I would ask that you please consider is that you can still have competing brick and mortar restaurants, um, next to each other. I don't see as that being unreasonable to ask, uh, a brick and mortar restaurant to compete with a food truck of the same nature. Again, by way of example, we have McDonald's and Wendy's located across the street from us in Oro Dam. Um, good friends with both owners. They both sell hamburgers, both sell shakes, fries, wide variety of things, um...
It's the economics of agglomeration.
Indeed. I would say it as everyone's tastes vary. And so simply because someone's selling a hamburger doesn't mean that everyone enjoys their hamburgers. Perhaps a variety in hamburgers wouldn't be such a, a bad thing.
Yeah.
And the term that I just used refers to, um, a situation where similar types of businesses congregate in a single area and that becomes the draw for the peop- for people to, uh, to come to purchase that kind of good and service and that the, the, um, businesses in that area would actually generate more revenue, more sales by conglomeration, agglomeration than they would if they were distributed.
And that is entirely, that is entirely our theory behind the, uh, food trucks. And a successful theory, I might add, that's what seems to work. You put three, five, 20 food trucks in one location, it becomes a destination and everyone goes there for food trucks. So maybe placing them all in one location wouldn't be such a bad deal. Sorry.
So the only question is, you know, you know, is our concern just with the, if our concern is just with the downtown businesses and downtown eating establishments, um, not including the downtown mixed use zone in the ordinance as it is currently, is that what is going to satisfy us? And that's something that we'll all probably think about and come back. We're coming back to the next meeting to approve this, right?
Right, yeah. So hopefully we'll get some straw votes or some consensus, some nods and things for some of these, uh, discussion items.
Yeah, and I'd like to not have the metal buildings. I don't know, I, I just feel like that's going to really, that just radically means we have these medical, these buildings pop up every place we have it. I, in my mind, I think that needs to be, we need to be careful with that. So if they don't need them and you have to leave anyway and go to your cantina, which is...
Well, there, I actually have, please forgive me. I have some ideas that might, um, that I'd like to float with Wes about potential solutions for that. Not only the unsightly metal, metal containers, but some other things that might make, uh, benefit everyone in the long term. I didn't know a lot about food, uh, food trailers until I was invited to drop three off in the, the state fair and I got a fast lesson, steep learning curve of what's required for a good food trailer and what makes for a good site.
It seems to me the site is key and that's why I think it would be neat to have one or two locations that were dialed in and really put, well, put together and we had great food trucks there. And that became the destination instead of, just seemed a little unorganized to me.
Well, then, if you're at that point where just one or two people have the, I hate to use the word monopoly, then we're picking and choosing winners.
You mean the landowner?
Yeah, the landowners.
Who creates the village?
Yeah. And then if there's, for example, the 200 square feet from another food truck, um, you do the math, that's basically three acres away. So you're having one food truck every three acres.
In one village?
Well, no, that was just it. The way I read the, the, um, the draft ordinance and maybe I misread it, I'll be the first to admit my brain's not functioning at all.
All right. I think it's referring to the separation between different food truck villages, which is what my question was earlier, is why, is why there's a separation?
Right.
So, and I didn't think anybody had a good answer other than somebody else does it that way, but I don't consider that a good answer, so.
But yeah, I think, you know, the people know where the good locations are. And so the people with the good locations are the ones that are going to have the good food. They're going to go with this.
So is there consensus to delete that 200-foot, um, space requirement between food truck villages?
Unless there's a good reason.
Uh, I, I work outside and I can't refrigerate my lunch. So when I get a chance to stop at a food truck, I'm going to pull in the parking lot with the lease, lease cars. So, because I got a, I get a half hour lunch, get my lunch and eat it and, um...
Yeah, I make a suggestion on that one, too. Um, the hours, current hours for food trucks are 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Costco opens at 6:00. You have a lot of contractors just waiting around with nothing to do. There might be special circumstances warranted where allowing food trucks to open at an earlier...
I, I see six, I see 6:00 AM. Um, I start at 6:30 AM. Um, I'm, I'm passing Lakeside at, at, uh, 7:00 AM and Mountain Tree is, uh, has the parking lot full at 7:00 AM.
So I would say if it's at all possible, consider maybe doing it for 6:00, maybe a little bit earlier. Uh, you're not going to get that for everyone, but obviously someone would benefit from that. Especially the people who have those early morning jobs.
And again, same question, is there a reason why we wouldn't have it earlier, like at 6:00? And I don't know. I'm asking questions.
I think it was originally intended to prevent disruption of neighborhoods. I don't know, no one wants a car pulling in at 7:00 o'clock, 6:00 o'clock in the morning.
A lot of it has to do with the city's adopted noise ordinance. So that would require an amendment to the city's noise ordinance. One thing to keep in mind, too, if we were to amend the hours of operation, that would create non-conforming, uh, regulations for basically every single existing mobile food vendor within the city. Because their permits are conditioned by code, no operating before, um, 7:00 and no operating after 10:00 PM. So that's something to keep in mind as well.
That's the permit for the mobile food vendor itself.
And that also applies to construction sites as well. So those same hours are consistent with construction sites.
What's the regulation now for one food truck? Because this is only for two or more, right?
One food truck, um, submits a, a mobile food vendor application and they, um, certify a, a certain number of, of, uh, conditions by initiating the application. They, they give us their health, uh, permit, uh, and tell us where they're going to set up. Uh, and, uh, then we administratively review that permit and issue it.
So that's pretty simple. So this is just when you want to have two or more?
Yes.
Or whatever number you decide.
Right.
And the other, the other, uh, item here that you may want to consider is a minor use, conditional use permit. According to our city's code, does not need to go to the planning commission. It can be approved by staff. But we take them to the planning commission, uh, as a rule. So if, if you wanted to make an exception in this case and not have to come to the planning commission, uh, for, uh, every food truck village, assuming we get three or four in the city, uh, then, uh, you could delegate that to staff as well.
Because this is a new thing for us, we might want to take a look at it at least to start.
Okay, that's what I thought the commission's desires would be.
But if we become comfortable with, with how things are going and decide that we're wasting our time with each of these reviews, we can change that at a future time?
Works for me.
Is, um, is this use allowed in any zone in the city?
The, um, allowed zones are listed on the first page at the top, intent, and it lists, um, uh, the zone districts, office, neighborhood, commercial, limited commercial, highway, commercial.
Basically not allowed in any residential zones or in the downtown mixed use zone. I couldn't think of any other zones off the top of my head that aren't listed here.
What about, uh, curbside? Can, uh, a single food truck come downtown someplace or wherever, park on the curb and serve customers?
That's, uh...
I see that being done.
That's an interesting topic of discussion. We were actually, some of the staff was discussing that today, this, this afternoon, in fact. And, um, assuming that we do require paving, uh, underneath the, the parking and the, the food truck, uh, a food truck might want to set up right near a sidewalk and then limit the amount of, of paving that they have, the cost that they have to incur for paving. Uh, and then people can, um, enter the property from the sidewalk, park on the street, uh, access the food truck and, uh, then, uh, le- leave. The public, the use of the public property, uh, we would not want the food trucks to use public property. They'd have to be off, off enough so that they wouldn't, uh, it, it cause, you know, sidewalk congestion, that sort of thing, and incur liability from the city. So, uh, we do want to limit these to private property. Lark, you may have, have more information or, or want to contest that, I don't know.
Well, I won't contest it, Wes, but what I will add is that your right of ways, which is the public, um, access and allows for pedestrian access and constructions of roads, blah, 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 extends into, um, individual lots, as you might remember. So if we required the food trucks to stay out of the right of way, then there would be a natural setback for them from the property line in most cases.
That makes sense. Usually there's a 10-foot utility easement or something like that, yeah.
Right. So we could put, which in there that said you could not park, um, a mobile food truck within the public right of way.
That's in the ordinance or that's just the way it's handled now? Because I've seen them, uh, parked on the street and people pull up or walk up and, and, uh, access the food truck and get their meal.
Well, if it's just one food truck, this ordinance is for two or more in private property. It doesn't address food trucks on the streets.
Well, shouldn't we? I mean, you would think that, uh...
The, the city's current mobile food vending ordinance requires all individual food trucks to be located on private property with the authorization of that property owner. So it currently, all of the individual food trucks that you see should have a city-issued permit as a mobile food vendor and they should also be maintaining the authorization of the property owner to be vending on that property at all times. Now, a couple of years ago, we did get kind of close in allowing Joe's Lunch to go to vend and set up on parking lot A here in downtown Oroville. That was going to be a specific administrative permit process that we were going through, but that ultimately fell through and we decided not to move forward with that. And since then, there should be no mobile food vendors on public property on the street. They should all be on private property vending with the permission of that property owner.
I think I got my question answered. They're not allowed on the street. What about a private street?
Private streets are...
I mean, there are private streets all over.
Are okay, yeah.
So a person on a private street is not, uh, affecting the, the city right of way, but, uh, there are private streets where they can pull up and, and, uh, and serve people. So I still have the concern about, uh, street side, uh, use of, uh, use of street side space for this use. It doesn't seem to be covered adequately in the ordinance, one way or the other. From what I've, I only got this to, to donate it, so I... From what I've, I only got this to, to tonight, so I haven't had a chance to read it in depth, but I just read through it and, uh, so I do have a concern about, uh, you know, curbside, uh, or probably on private streets or driveways. And, and did I- Did I get an answer about the zoning? I mean, you said it was in the ordinance, but, uh, what zones are it allowed in?
It's at the top, at the top of the page under section seventeen point four eight point one six zero. And A, intent.
Page four of your packet.
What page?
Page four.
The very top.
And so, a- as we typically do in the city, we do have our land use matrices, uh, for each zoning districts, non-residential, residential. Um, that's something that we would likely be updating to include this as a use-specific regulation and include it by reference to this code section. So that way, when we have applicants looking at our zoning code, in our zoning districts, it does state mobile food vending village with a reference to this code section stating it's gonna be a use permit.
And couldn't we just add that you can't have it on a private road? To answer Carl's concern.
Definition could be updated to just state parked on private property, shall not be located on, on, you know, curbside, streets, public or private, something like that, if we don't wanna expand too deep into it.
Add that to it.
Um, there's been talk about paving, um, when, when Walmart or somebody comes in, we seem really concerned with how much they, they pave a lot. Is there something similar, you know, they have an acre lot? Are they paving ninety percent of the lot?
Since these are, uh, mobile structures and not permanent structures, I think, uh, it makes sense to, uh, just require minimal amount of paving. If a food truck wants to go on an existing paved lot, that's not a concern and-
Uh, I mean, if somebody wants to put, you know, twenty, twenty food trucks and then they think paving the whole lot is the best thing to do, is, are, are we gonna say that's okay? We're not worried about drainage, we're not worried about?
Oh yes, paving requires all of the, the drainage and the-
A number of trees to off, you know, just like we'd make anybody else do with a large parking lot.
All of those things would be considered, uh, in the use permit, uh, review process.
Just, just so, it'd be nice to, to, to say something in the ordinance so that if somebody proposes that, they, they understand that there's this-
That was gonna be my next one.
Is that like the development standards?
Infrastructure.
It's more infrastructure?
I think this is premature. I think this needs to be looked at a little more in-depth. You know, I see those vendors on, there's a vendor in, uh, where Food Max is, or I don't know what they're selling, if they're selling ribs. There's a guy in Olive Highway with a big thing, he's selling ribs. Um, I don't know if that's, if it's paved there or where he's doing it or not, I don't know.
It's actually gravel, uh-
Yes, gravel and, you know, there's no traffic study there, you got cars pulling in and out right there, and that's not a spot for cars to pull in and out of. That spot. Maybe you can do an overlay or something, but I think it should be a designated area. And if people wanna sell theirs, they wanna have a food court, make a food court in an area. And, or maybe have an overlay or one or two lots. Like Wyatt said, if you're gonna have a guy with a, with an acre lot, if he's gonna do always infrastructure, storm drainage, and, and asphalt and sewer and lighting and everything, that's a big chunk of, that's a big investment to get five or ten percent of what the food truck's gonna pay you, or a couple hundred dollars in rent. It, it doesn't make much sense. So it doesn't seem like anybody would do it. It's not the highest and best use in reality. I, I saw, I know, I think if there's a few pe- business people who want to do this, you know, maybe, you know, bring their sites in, let's see how their site's gonna work. Develop it, something like that, I don't know.
Make it site-specific.
Site-specific, maybe, I don't know, but to have ten different little food courts in around town. We're not Alameda, we're not Chico, we're not Pleasanton, we're not Walnut Creek. We don't, we're not saying, we don't have, you know, a hundred, two hundred people walking to a food truck, you know? I'm just saying, there's, you know, we should have a designated area, make it nice, where you can have ten or twelve. I mean, you have farmers' markets at Dove's Landing, you have farmers' markets out here, you know? You have things up on the levee, I mean, I don't know if that's even possible there. But it's just a designated area. So it's the destination, this is the food court, you know? Uh, I don't know.
So you're recommending a-
I'm listening, um, and I was wondering if you take a look at any of the zone districts that are listed on the top of page four, are there any of those zone districts that you'd like to strike right now? Do you in fact want to allow mobile, a mobile food village and an office zone district? Or a neighborhood commercial? If there's any of those zone districts that you don't wanna see two or more mobile food trucks at for an extended period of time, just let us know. We can strike them.
Lark, I, I would like to suggest and for the commission to consider as well, that we remove open space as a permanent zoning district. Those regulations that are set in our zoning code, uh, prohibit more than ten percent of the lot being covered and more than ten percent being paved. So that is meant to be kept as open space and most of those are city-owned property anyway.
Okay, we, we can do whatever you want. This is your city's ordinance.
Okay, so, um, in the interest of, of time.
I've got one more question.
I do too. One more question, alright, keep going.
Go ahead, Carl.
So, we're looking at a site, has a use already on it. And you wanna have this food court thing also on the same property? Um, that's half a question, I mean, that's half of a question. The other half of the question is, uh, the use that's on the property has a requirement for a certain number of parking spaces. Uh, will the, the food court truck or whatever use up one or more of, of the parking spaces and then, uh, in effect make the-
Talking about using the court here.
Restaurant or whatever the use, the other use is, non-conforming as far as dividing adequate parking spaces? So I'm not sure how that works.
Okay, this is, this is my understanding. Um, number one, we're only interested in putting multiple, long-term, putting multiple food trucks on the Home Depot lot.
On what?
On the Home Depot lot, and it's the-
Yeah, but the ordinance covers every lot in the, in the city.
Correct, so in instances, um, where others, or for example, if we wanted to put them at our gas station. Um, with regards to the parking, food trucks don't require parking spaces. So if we put them on our location, it would not affect the number of parking spaces required because they don't require any parking spaces.
No, but the food court could be using up parking spaces that are required by the other use on the property.
It could be.
And that's, I would, would that be part of the analysis?
It would, yes, it would.
And, and you deny it because, uh, twenty, there's twenty spaces actually required for the other use? And the food truck's taking up three spaces?
We have in fact denied a food truck in, um, one location that was very small, only had, uh, nine spaces, had a lot of traffic going by and such. And we figured that the, the, uh, traffic that the food truck would generate, uh, would be, uh, overwhelming and, uh, can, add to, to congestion too much, so we did deny a food truck at one location like that.
Okay, there's, there's a, a site that's an example, uh, on the corner of Grand and, is it Third, along the freeway? Uh, it's, I think it's a Chevron gas station.
Oh yes, Lolly owns that one.
Huh?
Lolly owns the gas station, he used to own the Arco down the street from us.
But there's been a food truck there for, with Hispanic food for
Ever.
At least a year or two. And it's a mess getting in there and getting out for people. Uh, I'm surprised that the owner, uh, doesn't recognize that he's losing customers because people don't wanna deal with, you know, temporarily parked cars around this food truck and you can't get, uh, you can't get in. And you, you try to go through the car wash, you go through the, the car wash, but you can't get out of it because there's-
Everyone there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So-
That's up to the landowner though.
I know, price we pay for a free capitalistic society, landlord's not thinking things all the way through. So, yeah, it's bad for business for him, bad for business for the food truck operator. But I'm in no position to tell anyone how to run their business if that's the way.
I'm just saying that, that those are issues that are faced by the city in approving a food truck village or whatever you call it, site.
Indeed, he would be.
If a use is already on the property.
We're, that's true, and in a, a hypothetical, absolutely. Fortunately, with respect to our Home Depot property, we don't have an existing, uh, there's nothing on it. It's just bare, bare land, so we'll probably have to drop some gravel down. But, um, we don't have the problem of an already existing business.
Hey Mike.
How many, how many parking spaces are we requiring for a food truck? Any, zero, one, two?
None, we had this conversation at the meeting. They don't require any.
There's, I mean, you take this gas station thing and during the lunchtime, there can be five or six cars parked in there.
Part of the site plan review would, would have to do with, uh, uh, traffic flow and, and if there was enough space to park cars, we certainly wouldn't require spaces to be marked or anything like that. We just want enough space, you know, so that people could come in and out, so.
But, is that in the ordinance?
Excuse me, um, down at the bottom of page five of your packet, item number twelve, reads, "Mobile food vendors operating within a parking lot shall not inhibit traffic circulation and shall maintain the minimum required onsite parking spaces for the principal use on the property."
Perhaps you should have dropped similar language for single-use vehicle or single-use vendors too, I don't know, at a different time.
Single, single-use mobile food vendors are also required and they shall not operate in required parking spaces, required to meet minimum parking requirements for the other businesses, they shall not block any parking, required to adequately serve other businesses or any driveways or aisles for vehicular circulation. So currently, our regulations prohibit them from causing a non-conforming minimum parking standards not being met.
Someone should talk to Lolly.
Do you have approval from Home Depot, I'm assuming?
No, I own the lot. It's a cor- it's a corner lot near Home Depot.
Yeah, you should specify exactly what you're talking about, cause everybody's thinking you're at Home Depot.
Third and Nelson, there's a-
You're at the corner lot, it's a separate lot.
It is, Third and Nelson.
Exactly where is it? Is it, um, in front of Home Depot, is it by Dollar General? I mean, where is it?
The other side.
It's, um, boy.
Yeah, the corner.
The corner.
Can you pull it up on your computer?
It's in front of Home Depot, uh, at the corner of, uh, Nelson and Third, uh, very close to the-
Wanna see it?
Northeast corner of Nelson and Third.
It's, it's the, it's the pad that's right on the corner there.
When you get off the freeway, going north on, on the grand, it's straight across the street.
So there's Home Depot, there's the highway, and there's the lot, right there.
Nelson.
Okay, this lot right here. Okay, and how big is that lot?
Gosh almighty, I've only sprayed it-
It's probably an acre.
Acre or two, yeah. Not two, but definitely an acre.
Well, I guess the, the, the answer would be pave it, make it a food court, put ten, ten there. It's your lot, it's the destination. Home Depot's a great place, cause you have contractors who are hungry, they go there every day.
Lot of traffic.
Okay, they don't use all that parking there. I mean, is that an interchange? There you go.
That's what we were thinking.
There you go, pave it.
Exactly.
And that's our food court for the city, everybody knows to go there.
We're just getting hung up on Home Depot, the Home Depot location.
Seems like a good idea to me.
It's my thought, I don't know, I could be wrong.
Okay, so.
Um.
I think it just needs to be, I, we can't make any decisions on it tonight, honestly, really, I don't, I don't think we can. But I think i- i- it's more of a, I don't know.
A one-off.
It's more of a workshop-type deal, or maybe, maybe more of a workshop with the DRC guys. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know.
Okay, um, and then maybe I should recap, um, and see if there's a consensus on these, these questions, uh, that we've discussed. First of all, uh, the zoning, the types of zoning that it's allowed are, is fine, the way it's written, except we would delete open space.
Okay.
Uh, that means it's not allowed in downtown mixed-use and it's not allowed in residential zones. We would, um, delete, we- There's a three hundred foot buffer requirement as well in this ordinance for that.
The food truck, you know, the-
The, the use. The use, the house or whatever. Yeah.
For the village, not for the food truck. For the village, not for an individual food truck, we're talking about a village.
We're only talking about villages here. That, um, ours can be flexible, uh-
Two can be a village, that's the problem.
Minimum two.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, two is a village.
So that, that's the way it stands, two is a village.
Yeah.
The hours are flexible to match the hours of any, any connecting or, or adjacent, uh, businesses. The, uh, paving can be flexible to areas of use only, not, not necessarily the entire site. Uh, the five thousand dollar deposit would stay if somebody wants to put a Connex box, uh, there.
I wanna get rid of that though.
Well, you don't have to have a Connex box.
I don't want the Connex box all over these.
I think it's still, so that they don't leave a chair.
Then what's the solution for storage on site?
But I thought they're mobile food trucks, that's the point.
Right, but, but, sorry, I'm interrupting here. Um, there are associated trash cans, there are associated hand washing stations for the public. Um, if there's a large enough area, there needs to be a porta potty, which also requires, um, hand washing stations. So where do you store those so they don't disappear in the middle of the night?
And then people are gonna start hanging out in those in the middle of the night, so.
I mean, how many do you-
Not gonna, not gonna argue.
I'm pretty dense, I think, cause I'm still not getting it.
Okay, well, it's obvious, we're gonna need more discussion on this one.
Two. Uh, of these to apply for the minor use permit, is that right?
Uh, yes.
The way, the way I see this happening though is if a property owner wants to have mobile food trucks on their property, and say it's the vacant lot on, on Third and, and Nelson, whatever property that is, uh, and then they would apply for a minor use permit to authorize the mobile food vending village. That application would need to detail the number of trucks that are gonna be on the property, the scale and scope of the paving that's gonna be done, the location of any proposed Connex box, and then the fencing that would surround the property in accordance with this code. If an individual just wanted to put one individual food truck on a property, they would not need the minor use permit, they would instead go through our administrative mobile food vendor permit to authorize that individual food truck. So what we're looking at right now is property owners who wanna have more than two or more mobile food vending trucks on one property, they would have to then apply for the use permit to create an entire village in accordance with the standards that we're outlining in this code.
We would, uh-
So there's a separate, uh, ordinance or whatever covering, uh, wants to put just one-
Yes, there's a separate-
On a property?
Separate ordinance for that.
Correct, yes, and that's currently adopted and being utilized right now.
Is it a minor use permit application to do that, or just staff approval, or what?
Just staff approval for, as an administrative review.
Okay, and are there standards that the staff has to use to, to, uh, approve it?
Yes. Yes.
Like three hundred feet, you can't be closing three hundred feet to adjoining a single-family home?
I'm not sure if that's in our mobile food vendor ordinance.
That is not currently within our mobile food vending ordinance, it has to just be located on private property. The way we've inferred that to be is that it has to be in a commercially located zone, so along Oro Dam, Olive Highway, one of those, wherever you see them. Typically, you can't have a commercial, in this case, the mobile food vendor, in a residential property.
No, but there are zones, commercial zones that, that are joining residential zones.
Correct, there are, and that's not currently covered within our mobile food vending ordinance that we have adopted. Those applications are reviewed on an individual case-by-case basis as they come in to receive their administrative permit. If staff feels that it would be, uh, not in line with our mobile food vending ordinance or with our noise ordinance and may cause issues with the neighboring property owners, we do have the discretion to not approve that.
It sounds like there's a weakness there in that ordinance, if I'm understanding what we're talking about here.
There, there could be, and that could be up for discussion as well, while we are working on this mobile food vending village ordinance, that we could also revisit the food vendor.
I'm just saying that it's something that we need to look at too, since we're talking about, uh, what do you call it, food trucks or whatever? Uh, to me, a food truck, a food truck is a food truck, and it's one food truck or two or three. And to me, it's just as important to understand the impact of a single food truck as it is two food trucks, when it comes to adjoining residential property.
Okay, we'll, um, we'll ask Lark to look at that, uh, and make sure that the two ordinances remain consistent with each other, uh, and that the impacts, uh, from one food truck, uh, are, are addressed, uh, in, in the ordinance. Uh, also, I think, uh, this should come back again for additional workshop, uh, and, uh, maybe we'll bring some more examples and some photographs and some images and, and some other, other thoughts, so that, uh, we can, uh, we can get more, more information about these food truck villages and where they are and, and the circumstances, uh, under which they, uh, they exist.
So the food truck that parks on the, on, uh, is it Huntune?
Mm-hmm.
Is that illegal?
At Carla Mays, no.
Huh?
That's, 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 that has a permit, at Carla Mays.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, that's.
Yeah, that one has a permit.
Straight on the curb.
No, it's on, in the parking.
I don't know, I've driven, that could be.
It's in the parking lot.
It's in the parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. I swear it was on the street, saw one on the street.
It's in the parking lot. But I've seen another one there, yeah, and it's in the same place and, yeah.
Part of the, uh, the, the issues with, with staff is keeping track of all these food trucks because it may not, it may not be of this, in the location that is permitted for.
Well, that's true.
That's why you need one location and one village.
So if I could ask one more question, and you may have already addressed this, um, but, uh, you, so you've seen the ordinances it's drafted, right, and you've kind of read through it? Is there anything that you see in here that, for, for you as somebody who would apply or probably has already applied for something like this, that your requirement that you see is onerous or problematic or something that you would question, other than what we've talked about?
I, as much like your, your colleague, I have not examined them in detail, and the ones that have leapt out at me, I've already spoken of.
Okay.
My plan is to provide a, a written response, uh, before the next council meeting.
And I.
So you could see what my thoughts are.
And I ask because I have no idea about the admin, about how to run these kinds of things, I don't, I don't know what, uh, you know, what's going to be a problem, and if there, you know, if anything is, we ask if there's a reason why we have this in here and we'll, we would.
I appreciate that.
Negotiate.
If I see something that leaps out at me, uh, there's obviously a reason Santa Rosa and Alameda and these other counties.
I wouldn't assume that.
So that's, I'm kind of, I'd like to know myself, but I haven't seen anything other than what I've already said.
Yes, staff, are you going to summarize all this in a, in a report that goes to the planning commission or, you know, what, what we're doing or proposing and all of that?
I, I think Wes was in the process of verbally summarizing it so I could make notes, um, and come back and address the commission.
Yeah, cause I, I would like, if we're going to do that, I would like to have it before sitting down here at, at the tail of the planning commission. It'd be, be nice to have it a week ahead of time, so, you know, I can logically review it and have cogent comments. Uh, because I feel kind of silly, something, asking some of these questions, having never read the ordinance, because I just got it tonight. So I, I just don't hope, I mean, I hope we don't, are, are not faced with that situation again, I like that.
Well, if I can back you up on that, yeah, we did get, we didn't get a notice about the, uh, um, about the planning, with, uh, we, we weren't sent the agenda or anything for the meeting, I had to go online to find it on Monday. And so that's something that normally the, um, that the, um, the, your, your position, you, you know, you'll send it out to us when it's ready, and I understand that we had some edits during the week on it, but.
Well, we apologize for that oversight and, uh, it, it, it's not going to recur.
It's not a hardship to go on the site either.
Also, also, when it gets posted on the site, we usually, I, I'm signed up to the listserv that gets emailed, but I, I never received that email this week, so I don't know how that works, but.
I'll look into it.
Thank you, folks, appreciate your time.
Okay, Wes, had, had you concluded your summary?
Uh, yes, there are a couple of other things, but we can talk about those offline.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, thank you very much, Commissioners, I appreciate all of your comments, and we will, um, consider all of them.
Thank you.
And you'll be working with staff on, on?
Ye- yes, sir.
Creating whatever it is we're going to have at a future meeting, I presume.
Correct, I don't like working in a vacuum.
Okay.
All right.
I guess that's the, we've concluded, uh, item one.
Uh, we have, still have the oak tree mitigation ordinance.
Yeah, half of item one.
Half of item one.
Because the other half is the oak tree mitigation.
So, um.
Which I haven't had a chance to read because I didn't get it.
So, uh, we have the oak tree mitigate, loss mitigation ordinance, which has been a, uh, worked on by staff for quite a while. It is, uh, requested by the city council, it's one of their priorities to see, and, uh, DRC has discussed it. Connor, um, has worked with Wade, our tree, uh, streets person who is here tonight in person. And, uh, the two of them will, um, Connor will present the ordinance as drafted, and then Wade is here, uh, to, to, uh, a- answer any questions.
Okay, so this is, this is my item, um, what we are talking about are some updates to our oak tree mitigation ordinance. Uh, the, the key parts really are trying to make it less onerous on our property owners and, and developers to mitigate oak trees. Currently, the ordinance as written, it does have some holes in it, it doesn't properly reference our tree removal permit section. It, uh, talks about an in-loo fee but doesn't set a fee, so we're trying to close up those loopholes and, and get the ordinance a little bit, um, cleaner and clearer for the public to understand. So, the oak tree loss mitigation ordinance, uh, is currently adopted by the city, it's on the books. It sets mitigation requirements for the removal of oak trees with a single trunk, measured, uh, six inches at DBH diameter at breast height, or for multiple trunks in aggregate at ten inches. The current ratio of mitigation is, um, one inch for every one and a half, two inches, something like that, two inches for every, uh, one inch removed, so it's a pretty onerous one. We're, we're trying to make it back to a one-for-one ratio, you remove one inch, you replace one inch, at a minimum of fifteen gallons. Uh, in addition.
The current standard is two inches, uh, must be planted for every one inch removed.
Yes, thank you, Wes. Um, currently, the, the ordinance does not set exceptions to the, the code beyond if the tree is removed for poor health or it furthers urban forestry or land management practices that support the health of native plant communities. So what we've done is we, we've looked at multiple jurisdictions who have similar oak tree mitigation requirements and tree removal requirements, and outline them a little bit more, so fire department personnel can remove them. Or if an oak tree is on a developed, single-family, um, on a lot developed with a single-family dwelling unit, it can be removed if it meets certain criteria. That criteria is in line with, um, almost every jurisdiction that has that exception set up, so Citrus Heights, Spreymont, Alhambra, multiple other jurisdictions have that. Um, it just sets kind of that standard to where a person who has a five-acre lot developed with a single-family house can't come in and remove all five acres of oak trees, because that's the destruction of a native habitat and could likely cause an issue with sequoia or any other issues, um, related to it. So, really, we're just trying to clean it up a little bit. The other parts are updating our tree removal permit code section to properly reference our new department heads and, um, the tree removal, tree preservation requirements. So, that's just some minor changes there, we, again, we're just having a discussion tonight, so happy to hear what any and all of you think about it.
Can you define a heritage tree?
A heritage tree is.
Well, I mean, it's about oak trees, but then it says heritage trees.
And there's nowhere in our municipal code that I can find a definition for that.
So a heritage tree, my understanding is we have a section, uh, where an individual is able to apply for a tree that meets certain criteria, I want to say it's, um, one that maybe is of local importance, so say, for example, like Hooker Oak in, in Chico, that was a heritage tree that was applied for and it cannot be removed. Unfortunately, it's not there, but, you know, um, it's an individual application that a property owner can apply for to preserve the tree. That would be considered a heritage tree. So, I think for, i- if the city were to come in and, and find a tree located on, um, let's just say at the lot home, it was planted, it has a historic value, we can officially declare that to be a heritage tree. That needs to be protected, can't be removed under really any circumstances.
Let me weigh in on that a little bit. In other jurisdictions, heritage trees are often defined as over eighteen inches DBH or twenty-five inches DBH, something like that, uh, which, you know, are older, very well-established, uh, and tend to be historic trees, uh, very expensive to remove, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, we do not define, as Connor has mentioned, heritage trees in our code anywhere that I'm aware of, I don't know.
I couldn't find it.
Uh, we don't, so we should add that, we should define what a heritage tree is, uh, whether it requires to have historic value as, as Connor is suggesting, or whether there's a certain size limit. So we should add that to the ordinance somehow.
Well, you're going to treat a heritage tree, I would think, different than a regular oak tree, I, I would presume. Your standards would be?
So, our, our city code does define, and it, it's in a kind of convoluted section, it's under streets, sidewalks, and public spaces, chapter twelve point twenty, trees and plantings. We define historic tree, which we can utilize that same proper reference to it.
Okay.
It's a tree which is in planter strips, public streets, found by the Parks Commission to be of notable historic interest because of its age, type, or historic associations, and has been designated by resolution of such commission as a historic tree. So, our sense is we're kind of using it as, it has some sort of historic value and is declared as such.
To be consistent in our, uh, terminology, because when you, yeah, searching for the term heritage or heritage trees in our code, and I couldn't, didn't see anything, so.
Is this a state requirement?
So when it comes to oak tree mitigation, uh, the state has hunted that regulation to the county level. So sequoia sets regulations and thresholds under a certain Senate bill, I can never remember, but it's for counties to mitigate oak woodlands, and that is defined as, I believe, ten percent canopy coverage. Cities can voluntarily decide to have mitigation standards for oak trees. Um, that is a, a case that I found, City of Vacaville approved a development application, and an appellant, um, wanted to say that they did not consider the oak trees in terms of the Public Resources Code and Senate Bill. That is not a applicable code section to city jurisdictions.
Are any of our oak trees considered endangered? Are, uh, any species of oaks in Oroville considered endangered?
Wade can probably answer that a little bit better, I'm trying to think back to my biology classes here, and I, I know blue oak woodlands and, and valley oak woodlands are threatened in terms of development and loss due to climate change and things like that. Sorry if that's a taboo term to say, but, um, I believe there may be certain species that are on that threatens.
Cause I, I could see, you know, using this just for the threatened trees, but like the live oaks and stuff that just seem to grow up like weeds some. I'm in the foothill overlay, so not everybody up here probably has to deal with this.
I do.
Yeah.
We're going to be hand-on-hand in this, aren't we?
And my, uh, my subdivision was previously in Olive Orchard, so now any oaks are voluntary. But, um, yeah, uh, the live oaks could be a fire hazard. Um, I, I could see any tru- having just the threatened oaks in this and not the other species of oaks.
Yeah, and my, my comment from the DRC meeting on this is that it's, it, it, it's, you, you, there, there's some languages being proposed to talk about, um, fire safety and creating fire-safe landscapes in our wildland urban interface. We have a significant portion of our city limits that's within the wildland urban interface where we should be encouraged to create a fire-safe landscape, because basically, our, you know, us property owners up in the hills, you know, what we do protects, protects the city. Uh, don't, yeah, that's another conversation about insurance, oh, yeah. Just went through that. Um, but I, you know, I think we need to strengthen the, um, the ability for property owners in that interface dealing with these live oaks that, you know, as you say, I mean, they propagate like a son of a gun. And if you're not constantly maintaining the landscape for them, uh, you know, it doesn't take long for them to grow to six inches. And then when, and then they become a density that is dangerous and needs to be dealt with.
And insurance doesn't like it.
So will Butte County allow us to do only endangered? Like, what, what are the rules that Butte County is putting on us with this ordinance?
So Butte County's not putting any regulations on us, this is just us voluntarily deciding what standards we want to set for oak tree mitigation. I did look up our other, uh, neighboring city jurisdictions, Gridley and Biggs do not have, to my understanding, oak tree mitigation requirements, then again, they are in the valley quite deeply. Uh, Paradise does have tree removal permit requirements, and then Chico does have tree removal permit requirements that are pretty similar to what we are proposing. So, the city's current mitigation requirements and oak tree standards that we have adopted are very similar to the city of Rockland, which has gone deep into permits and mitigation requirements for oak trees that is, is beyond onerous for what we want.
Yeah.
So we're trying to get ours a little bit easier and more in line with kind of what maybe Chico is, uh, has on the books, but anything that you guys really want to have, it's up to you guys to, to decide.
Well, I want to understand what is involved in filing a tree survey and making an oak tree preservation plan.
When we, um, approve a project, a subdivision, uh, or a multifamily.
Or single family, is it?
Um, not so much single family, but we, we have required, we have, uh, in a, in the case of where a single-family, uh, lot, they wanted to build a garage, we had, we had to work with them on identifying the oak trees that were in the property and, and they adjusted the site to minimize the loss of those oak trees and such. And that was within the city limits. When it comes to a subdivision, we do require a tree survey and, by an arborist, and they identify all of the trees, uh, their, uh, species, uh, their condition, and, uh, whether they interfere with the proposed, uh, structures, uh, the, the proposed project. And, uh, then we review them individually, Wade in particular reviews these, uh, and approves them or, or makes them modify them according to save trees or not.
But for a basic homeowner who has oak trees on their property, right now, they're not required to do this.
There is an oak tree plan that currently.
And this is, and they, they have to have, they have to comply with it, and are they allowed to trim their own tree?
We had a, uh, case, uh, recent. We had a case recently up on Holly Trail where there was a nine inch oak tree interfering with a homeowner's proposed expansion. And, um, the, he had to get a, an arborist to look at that tree and determine its condition. Uh, and eventually he was allowed to, uh, remove that tree so he could expand his lot. And he had to file a tree, was it a tree removal permit? I think that was the, the name of it. So, um, and, and so we did have to review all of that before we let him cut that tree down.
Uh, since I've been here and since this has been here, I think there might have been a subdivision on Highlands that had to replant up several oak trees. And then monitor them for a number of years to make sure they survived.
In the case of Ruddy Creek, um, that is out there north of the airport, and that is not in an oak woodland area. But, uh, because the site had been vacant for so long, used to be, I forget what, a, uh, vineyard or a peach orchard or something. Uh, they had a lot of oak trees that had grown to larger than six inches. And we did, in fact, uh, go through and have an arborist, uh, do, do the survey. We went out on the site and looked. And, um, we found that it was impractical for them to plant ten thousand dollars worth of, of, uh, trees somewhere. To mitigate the loss of those oak trees. Uh, we also de- determined that those oak trees were not in an established oak woodland area. So they were not, uh, as, uh, critical, uh, to, to save as, as, you know, state law recommends and such. And, uh, so we, uh, allowed them to do a lot less in the way of mitigation. Uh, they, they'd be planting oak trees, uh, in the sidewalks. They'll be planting oak trees in their, their, um, re- residual lot and such as well. So we worked that with them individually and, and worked it out with them. Uh, that it was impractical to, to plant two inches for every inch.
I'm starting, uh, uh, with, with Butte County, we're starting a, a bridge project on Ord Ferry Road, uh, west of Durham. And, um, they're required to, uh, replant for every tree that's taken out. And, um, instead of taking out all the oak trees that would make the, the project easy to operate equipment. They, they're gonna go around trees because it's, it's, it's not feasible to replant the number of trees that it would be required. The site isn't even large enough to replant the number of trees that would be required to take out the trees. You know, so.
Is there possible to have a provision that, uh, a property owner can contribute to a fund? That, uh, is set aside to, uh, create oak woodlands or, I'm not sure how to ask this question, but.
Yes, so they can contribute, uh, an in-loofe instead of mitigating the oak trees onsite or offsite. That in-loofe, um, currently, we do not have it adopted. So we say in-loofe and we just leave it up on a case by case basis. Uh, in discuss- in discussion with Wade, uh, I believe we determined a fair in-loofe was about two hundred something dollars per, per tree. That factors in city staff labor time, purchasing the tree, and, uh, materials to plant that.
I didn't understand that. It, is that provision in the ordinance now or?
It, it is in the ordinance right now, uh, that we're currently working with. We just don't have the fee adopted by council. So we're proposing a fee for council to adopt with this update.
It's on page eleven of your packet.
So if I can go ahead and add, another one of the observations I'd made about the oak tree loss mitigation ordinance is that it looks, it looks like it's trying to do, ha- serve two purposes that aren't working together very well. And that's part of what's kind of driving this conversation is right now. You know, there's a pro- provision here about preserving oaks whenever there's a, a subdivision grading, anytime you need a grading permit. That, uh, action should be taken to, you know, avoid, you know, avoid ru- root drip areas to, um, you know, then to be able to mitigate for oaks that you would, um, that, that you would have to remove during that process. But the other side of this is just a residential removal. And there are two, it seems like there's two s- different structures for both of those cases within the ordinance. You know, the, and, and it seems to me like they should be separated. Like, if, like, you know, talking about all of the, you know, issues with grading. And, you know, development of property probably should go into the portion of our municipal code that talks about permits for grading. Or talks about what needs to be done for grading. Whereas, you know, the discussion about, you know, cutting trees on a residential property where you need a tree permit. Probably should go into the tree permit section of seventeen dash forty-eight, whichever that is. We have a copy of it here because there are, um, there are proposed changes to that as well. So that's, it's a general comment, higher level comment, but.
I, I think, I, I, I'm not sure, cause this was a while back, but I, I think I remember when this ordinance came along. We had a joint session with the planning commission, uh, the city council, uh, possibly parks. And it might've been about the time everybody was trying to save the trees along Feather River. That P T N E was doing the gas lines. So that could be why the drip lines and all of that were in there.
Okay. I mean, it ha- it definitely has, it has merit to, to keep in here. I mean, if we're, especially if we're talking about the valley oaks that-
Those were sycamores, but I think everybody was really stirred up about, about that at the time. So that was maybe why the ordinance looked the way it did, because of what was going on at the time. And because it was not just the planning commission drafting, hoping to draft the ordinance. Just a little bit of backstory on the-
Wes and Connor, did, did you guys end up receiving the comments and that I had ma- sent you guys?
I did get your comments and shortly thereafter, there was a snafu and I was officially deleted as a city employee. So I lost my email for a, a hot minute. I got it back just recently, so.
Cause-
But yeah, we did receive it.
Cause I, I mean, I was kind of playing around with the idea of what that separation might look like. And I have absolutely zero experience in like writing city ordinances or anything. I'm not a lawyer, so I'm like, this is just an idea. I'm playing around with this idea, so I was hoping for, if there was any feedback on that. And that can be, and that feedback can be private too. It does, doesn't matter to me.
Well, uh, hopefully cleared up just a little bit. So we're trying to set all of our regulations, anything that has to do with oak tree. Under the oak tree loss mitigation code section. Within this code section, hopefully we are able to refer and provide proper reference to the sections. Where you have to then apply for a tree removal permit. Or what we would classify as a, a tree preservation plan, things like that. So within this, and as you've seen on our Muni code or Q code online, there will be clickable links in here that direct you to the proper location and how to reference it. Um, the reason why we're including kind of grading, ha- tree removal all in one section is, say, for example, we're in the case of Ruddy Creek, and we didn't have a tree mitigation ordinance. And we didn't discuss the drip lines. Nothing would stop that developer to come in, cut around the drip lines. Oak trees die. Well, we don't have to mitigate it. It's kind of their way around of mitigation. And then including the residential component in here is kind of our way of setting that exception in here. Like, you can read all this if you want for funsies, but this isn't going to apply to you in certain cases. And there may be certain scenarios where we can expand on that, as I've, um, heard. Especially in our, our foothill area and the wildland urban interface, the expansion of exceptions. One of the ones that I did see that I want to share with you guys is, um, I can't remember what city. But they did state that any single family dwelling unit, any lot can, um, is exempt from tree removal permits and oak tree mitigation. If it can no longer be feasibly subdivided any further. I thought that was good at first, then I had some back and forths where I'm like, well, we're dealing with now compounding state issues of the state saying you could do S B nine. And subdivide any property you want, you know, further. So there are some certain workarounds that we would have to think of.
Yeah, cause I mean, the, the, the current, um, limit on the exception that, um, a developed lot not be greater than ten thousand square feet. That takes out ninety-nine percent of our wildland urban interface from any exemption, so.
Yeah, and, and the reason why the ten thousand square foot number was set was because RR ten, you see there, is rural residential ten thousand square feet. Which is, in a perfect world scenario, all of those lots zone that will be ten thousand square feet. So it, it's just followed what our zoning code had at our general plan.
And why not the RR twenty? Cause that's what I, I'm in an RR twenty.
The reason why the RR twenty was not included was because it just started to feel like a little bit too big. There is no reason as to why, uh, scientifically it was not included, so it could be added.
Cause that's the, that, that's the folks who are in the RR, in or around the, at least around the RR twenty are the folks who are gonna be on the front lines if, uh, if disaster struck, so.
And now, I don't own a home, and I don't own a home in a wildland urban interface. So those of you who are homeowners and have insurance breathing down your neck telling you to cut trees down or so. Do they come out to your property, uh, or do they tell you specifically what trees they want removed?
They look at an over-
Yes.
They look, for, in my case, they look at, uh, Google Maps overhead, calculate the, um, uh, calculate the tree canopy. And whatever their threshold is, if you're, um, if you're over it, you get dropped. At least that's what my insurance did.
And I've had them come on site. I know they go onsite and check after when you have done the work, too.
They, they have come on site to our place before, years ago, but this last round, it was just, uh, straight up dropped.
So that, that's been another thought that's been in my mind, cause I, I have heard that story from city staff as well. That, that could be added theoretically as an exception, you know, pursuant to a, a homeowner's insurance report. That states whatever shall be removed, you know, that could be exempt from a permit, that work.
Yeah.
I- if so, if so desired.
Yeah, I think absolutely.
That could, that could take care of you guys in the wooey area.
Has to be in there.
Okay, say it loud again.
We have exemption in there for the fire department for fuel reduction. If the fire department deems you need full fuel reduction, then we can do the same thing with an insurance. Cause in the rural area, you shouldn't be penalized because of oak trees, and we're telling you can't remove them without mitigating them. The insurance company, we're gonna drop you, for insurance. That's what, you know, that's not the intent of this ordinance. So there's, we can, we can set exemptions in here where the mitigation wouldn't be.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what about guys out there get live oaks crawling over the place, cutting them for firewood?
Well, you can take the interior live oak out.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Let's scratch it.
You know, we're, we're trying to protect the native oak trees, and we accomplish all native oak trees. But we can, we can propose whatever we want going forward to city council, with the interior live oak. Yeah, as an arborist for, you know, thirty years, I know it grows fairly quick. We're slow growing, you know, we want to protect valleys and blues, and we can protect interiors, we want to protect the, you know, the live oaks as well. Um, you can set these exemptions and move forward, but we want to keep. Ordinance through Butte County and Chico and, you know, other places, we're actually trying to. The city of Orville being a tree sanctuary for forty-four years, uh, we don't really want to go backwards. So we don't want to be so burdensome on developers and homeowners that-
Yeah, and, and I think just to recognize that, you, you, appreciate where we're going with that. Cause I want to recognize the difference between, you know, in our more developed areas of our city where we have the street trees. And they're pretty and they provide shade and they provide culture and they, you know, they're, you know, very much things that we want to have in our city and want to preserve. And, you know, and keep here. But we also have a significant section of our city limits that are in firelands that we need to maintain for fire safety. That we should be encouraging our property owners to maintain for fire safety because that benefits all of us as well. Okay, so, yeah.
Connor, could you hear Wade's, uh, what Wade said?
I heard some stuff about tree city and removing live oaks and, and all these different things, so, some of it.
Uh, if we can get up here, you can come up here. I mean, come-
Okay, any more discussion on this topic?
I mean, are, we kind of have a consensus that maybe we can move, do just what Wade recommended. Remove the interior live oak, make sure that people out, and if their homeowner's insurance requires them to remove their trees, they're exempt from this.
If, you know, we want something riding, I would say, you just can't come and hey, they-
Right.
You know, we want something riding, just like the fire department, you know, fuel, fuel control and things like that.
So we can just put that in the ordinance.
Add it as an exemption then, um, and Connor will come up with some language so that, uh, it takes care of the, the live oak. Interior live oak and the insurance requirement.
And then instead of-
My pathway forward, my pathway forward I see is, uh, removing interior live oak from the definition, uh, or as a required mitigation. Um, add RR twenty as a zoning district in the removal exceptions. And then add a insurance report, whatever that may, may say.
Yes, and then are we gonna replace heritage tree with historic tree?
We should.
Or else historic slash heritage?
Terms set, sa- the same, so that we can find them, yeah.
I, I will research everything further to see where we talk about heritage and historic. I, I was just looking at the tree survey for Ruddy Creek, and it defined a heritage tree as twenty-four inches diameter or greater.
Okay.
So I'm gonna see where they got that from.
Narrow definition. Now, let, let me also the state that, cause in here we talk separately, I think it's in the permit side. That if you have a tree that's twenty-four inches, um, at breast height, that, that requires a permit, correct?
Uh, duh, 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 correct.
I think we want to keep it that way because I don't think we want the, uh, novice, run-of-the-mill people like me trying to cut tree. I know I won't try and cut a tree that big. That really requires a professional, um, that we, and, and that we have some extra protect- Basically, extra protection that somebody is not going out there and cutting big trees and causing property damage.
Connor, look, look into CEQA guidelines for that twenty-four inches. I think that may be where we got it for Ruddy Creek.
I am going to look further into that. I was just looking at the Ruddy Creek one again. And they did cite the Oak Woodland Conservation Act with reference that it's a county regulation. So I guess we're just using that as a CEQA threshold for the city.
Yes.
And I don't know if anyone else on commission is interested in, uh, in volunteering, but, uh, but Connor, if you, you know, if you have, you know, ideas or want to run a question. Or, you know, anything, anything by me or by anybody else who'd be willing to volunteer their time to help out, you know, I'm, I'm willing to help out, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, any further discussion on oak tree mitigation? One thing I didn't understand is, uh, we're confining this subject to mitigation. Not, there's a whole, I mean, we're talking about a complex, uh, issue. And yet, what we're discussing is just oak tree mitigation. Many, if you know what the word mitigation means, uh, is that, is that all we're talking about? Is that all the ordinance is gonna deal with, is the mitigation?
The primary thing it's dealing with is setting the mitigation requirements and exceptions to mitigation. And then we've referred to our tree removal permit section. So if you are required to mitigate it, you would then transition over and apply for a tree removal permit with your mitigation plan.
Okay.
And yes, the mitigation kicks in when trees are cut. Um, yeah. Okay, so, uh, we'll revise this and then bring it to the planning commission at the next meeting for ratification.
All right.
And thank you very much for your good work so far on this, Connor. Appreciate it.
First of all, thank you.
And Wade, thank you. This is Wade Adamary. He's our, our streets and trees, uh, director, so he's, he's also our city arborist.
Thanks Wade, the tree guy. He knows every tree in the city.
Thank you, Wade.
Okay, um. Historic preservation award discussion is now item two. That's next. Staff?
Yes, this item has been long incoming. This item was suggested by Commissioner Sheard a long time ago, about a year and a half ago now, is it?
Probably.
More than that.
Was it?
And the commission has directed staff to work with two commissioners to develop possible criteria, and those commissioners were Commissioner Sheard and Commissioner Durling. Several others also, people from the chamber, people from Historic Society, David, what's his name from the?
Daniel.
Daniel, yes. Met several times during twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, and they've come up with what is in front of you now. It was not in the original packet, so some of you have not had a chance to read it. It was on the August twenty-fourth agenda.
It's just this brochure.
It's the brochure, and there's a staff report associated with it. So key features of this, and the staff report is dated August twenty-fourth, so it was tabled and brought in today so that Commissioner Durling could, could attend and be here.
Brought it here.
So key features of this proposed historic preservation award are that it would be administered by the Historic Advisory Commission, which is you folks, that it would celebrate outstanding, period-appropriate architecture and landscape restoration, that it would be presented annually at the same time as the Citizen of the Year and the Artist of the Year Award are also presented typically during the State of the City celebration. One awardee per year would receive a plaque, press recognition, and more, and the Historic Advisory Commission, once, once you folks approve this, would then proceed to solicit sponsors, corporate sponsors and such, to assist in the moderate costs associated with administering this, such things as receptions and, and the cost of the plaque and things like that, and that there would be press activity celebrating the award, awardee. So staff recommends initiating the award. The award today is for group discussion. It's not, it was listed on the agenda as a discussion item, unfortunately, so you would approve it in the October meeting, and then it would go on to city council. The attachments in the staff report identify the mission and the vision and the reasons for the historic award, the first announcement of the award, the brochure, which you see there, is in trifold, and then a letter soliciting sponsorship, the resolution that, that you would pass or that we recommend that the city council pass establishing the award, and then the last page of your packet is a award program timeline, a draft. The, the planning commission approval would now be October seventeenth, or October, I think it's the twenty-fourth. Twenty-sixth.
We would be approving this?
Officially, the whole award program and, and all its associated activities. Then it would go to council for November approval. Then, once that happened, it would start, we would start, staff and the Historic Advisory Commission would together start promoting this award program, announce it, solicit sponsorships, and then this draft timeline has December thirtieth as the deadline for submittals, and then January and/or February for judging, and then March or April would be typically when the State of the City event occurs and, and the awards would be actually announced. So that the timeline is very flexible. We've got a lot of time in there before actually announcing the award at the State of the City. We would have to define a committee or the committees, or this group would have to meet as a committee of the whole in some kind of closed session in order to approve and keep secret an awardee. So that's, that's the overview of it. Carl and Natalie, if you wanted to add, Danny, I'm coming into this late, so Danny worked with, with this committee for over a year and a half, and he's now a planner at the city of Newport Beach, so Natalie and Carl, if you'd like to add something to this.
I'm gonna bring something up on this.
Okay.
I would presume that each of these photographs are of a actual historic preservation building.
Some of those aren't, well, you can see the town tavern building right there, and
What was that?
They're not all, all of these aren't in existence. I think the bottom of these are. Where it says Town Tavern, that one. Is this the Washington building over here?
The one-
And of course, the municipal auditorium doesn't look like that, but I do love that facade.
So they are all genuine historic photographs?
They are all, I mean, what you see in that photograph is a historic building?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just curious why underneath the photograph, we don't name what it is, or we don't inform people?
We'll tell Jordan.
What it is, so that they?
Yeah.
I, I was looking for, okay.
Like the Oroville Inn?
Yeah.
That's perfect.
Yeah.
The convention center.
Yeah.
The theater.
Why don't we have?
Oh, City of Paris, yes. And then this?
And the last one has, it's got the state.
Those two buildings, I believe, are gone.
Did, as well as the convention, I guess we call it Convention Center now.
Right. Yes, and maybe the year, we could put circa, I don't know, whatever year it was. I agree. Let's add that.
Yeah. That was the only comment I had.
Well, we'll certainly make those changes.
Yeah, and I think also, when we had talked with Dawn about this, there's going to be the winner or the person who receives the building that receives this award or the location would also be featured on the website.
Absolutely.
And in the paper and on the Facebook page, and they would receive a plaque, and we would have an event that we would invite people to, to come celebrate what they've done. And then I was wondering, too, at the address to the city, do we get to have a slideshow that shows building that we're featuring? Because, you know, they use that a lot at the, I think, the Arts Commission, just to have something visual to show people whatever property that we do honor.
Well, I'm, I'm really upset.
You are?
Yeah.
Why?
The Bank of America, Bank of Italy building is not prominent in this.
Well, we'll have to tell Jordan. To get, tell Jordan. Bank of Italy.
I have a quick question. So, so the buildings that are eligible, or properties that are eligible for the award include residential properties, correct?
Yes.
I might suggest adding a, in one of the photos, if it's a replacement or not, I don't know, but I have a, have a residential photo in here, just, just, because just looking through this without knowing the program?
That's a great idea.
It's all commercial.
Yeah.
Yep, you're right. That's a great recommendation. And I, and then how, deadline for submittals, and how do we submit? Letter application? And so this is how the public would submit to us, or if we have nominations, what we would do. So, I don't know, what do you think? A letter submittal, an application form? I want to make it simple, super simple and easy. I don't want it, because I know I've wanted to nominate people for things, but if I have to fill out a lot, I tend to not do it. So is there any way we can make this super simple?
Like a survey?
Really, just what's the property you think, and something easy?
Well, there would have to be some sort of a description of whatever renovation or upgrades, or, or, you know, what, what was done to the property.
Yeah, how it meets this.
How it meets this. And that's why it's in yellow in the timeline there, is, is for the, this commission to determine that. We can draft a, a brief application form along the lines of, of the other applications, the other award programs, and, and bring it back to you.
Before, we don't have a lot of time.
No, we don't. Well, we, but we have to pick. Our deadline is the end of the year. Oh, and then we have to choose in January. It's not. Maybe we don't.
Maybe, maybe you want to-
You're right. We don't want a hundred. We don't want very.
What happens if we don't receive any?
Well, I'll nominate one. I already have one I want to nominate. I just need the letter.
I've got one, too. It's called Bank of Italy.
Yeah, you want Bank of Italy, you want, yeah. No, we'll have nominations.
Well, we'll have to ask who, anybody that's submitting something they own, they may have to disqualify themselves from the judging committee, so we'll, we'll see about that, too.
Right, absolutely. I don't think Carl owns the Bank of Italy.
No.
All right, so then we'll move forward with this.
And you'll work on, someone will work on an application form?
Yes.
A simple, simple application form?
And we'll bring this to you in October for a ratification, and then we'll send it to the city council immediately.
Okay.
Does not have to be a public hearing item, so.
I, I personally want to thank the young lady to my right, the, the work that she's put in to get this done has been incredible, and, and we need to give her some kind of award, like Taco Bell or something.
No, the award is just having a building honored.
There you go.
That's, that's the award. We've got an amazing downtown. What we have, these buildings are incredible, and then the care they get, many of them get, is unbelievable. So I'm just excited that we get to honor people.
So yes, thank you for the energy.
Who have done that. Oh, thank you. You're welcome.
I think it has been noted that if we do get a hundred applications, we might adjust this to make two awards, perhaps?
Yes.
Or, or a couple of honorable mentions, something like that.
I think we just put, originally, it was that we, we committed to giving one. We didn't want to overburden ourselves, but we don't have a top limit. We can have quite a few.
I think we just play that one by year.
Yes, exactly.
Anything else? Okay, let's, uh, go on to reports and discussions. Probably the most important one is number four, name a DRC member from the planning commission to replace Commissioner Jenkins. Anybody want to volunteer?
So the, the way this works is that-
Anybody want to volunteer?
Is that every quarter, the Development Review Committee shifts in the two planning commissioners that represent, that are represented on the Development Review Committee, and they're the ones that, that review individual projects prior to coming to the planning commission for full discussion. And Commissioner Jensen has been on this for, I don't know, three or four months.
Yeah.
Nine months, really? But is, is willing to now move into the spot of chairing the DRC.
Oh, so you're gonna stay on it?
That's great.
I'll stay on until the end.
I thought you were dropping it.
No, he's dropping. The other J.
You can't drop. You cannot drop.
I was chair, he was-
So we need another volunteer to be on the Development Review Committee.
Terry hasn't been on it yet.
Currently, it meets the second Thursday of the month at three or three-thirty in the afternoon.
So it's supposed to be a six-month, is that the term that it's?
Yes.
The goal is six months, and then, then we'll flip again and have somebody else?
The newest person on there becomes the president in six months.
That's why, that's why I was on it for a year.
Right.
So you stay for a year.
So basically, you can be on it for a year. And thank you. Appreciate that. Commission reports, Historic Advisory, commission reports, we've beat that one to death already.
No, but I have two things.
Yeah.
Huh?
I have two things. Do you have something?
Go ahead. I do, but go ahead.
Oh, under, under Historic Advisory Commission reports?
I don't know what they come in under. I just want-
How about, how about miscellaneous? We need a miscellaneous. Number five.
I'll take that one.
Number five, I just added it's miscellaneous. Go ahead.
So I have a planning commission report, but we've been here for two hours already, and I'm had a long, exhausting day, and so I'm not really in the mood to present. Do you, do you happen to have printouts of what I'd sent you earlier last night, Wes?
Actually, no, I don't.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Then we'll, we'll, I'll, I'll table it for next time, then. What, as a heads up, I wanted to start a conversation about talking about some bicycle transportation planning that we can do, that I think, I think there are some things we can do to make it nicer for folks who live in town, to be able to, we can provide them with a, fairly easily provide them with a safe means of, of bicycle transportation for a number of good reasons, encourage more visitation to downtown Oroville, provide connections to, to schools and parks, and just kind of, just kind of start. The, our current bicycle transportation plan in our general plan is huge. It's this big monolithic thing with bike routes going all over the place, and we hardly have any of it now, and it's just daunting. We need kind of a step-by-step if we want to get to that point. And so I just want to start a conversation to talk about, I think, what I think is that first step, but we'll. I guess so.
Let me pass it off to staff.
I, I put together, I put together a PowerPoint presentation for it, so.
So may I make a suggestion that we put this on as a regular business item for discussion for the next meeting?
And it segues perfectly into what I wanted to present. I'm just gonna pass two papers, because I didn't hand anything in. So everybody just take two, a white one and a, and I guess we should, these are two recommendations, and this one from Strong Towns, which is the darker one.
This might, yeah, this might be connected to what we're talking about.
This is exactly connected. And I actually had a resident who lives on Montgomery hand me this, is this a tweet? I never know exactly where these come from, from Strong Towns. But they have now, you know, it's the difference between a street and a road, and they have now actually acknowledged there's something called throes, which are nothing, which don't balance. But specifically, I was wondering if we could look at Montgomery, because Montgomery is quickly becoming a highway that's very dangerous, and a few of the neighbors have told me that they actually drive their car to get across the street, and we have children, and it really is not pedestrian-friendly in people's speed, and there's no enforcement of the speeding. So I was wondering if we could look at that to see, and that kind of goes along with making this a safer bicycling wheelchair.
I'd like to be part of that conversation, because I have some ideas.
Yeah, I, well, in this, I was gonna encourage everyone, Strong Towns, if you haven't heard of them, is just a wonderful resource for resilient towns, basically more downtowns, and looking at vehicular and pedestrian traffic and how to, and traffic easing, and all sorts of wonderful resources. But I would just love to bring that up also, especially Montgomery's such a beautiful street, I hope, but it's kind of turning into a highway. And we have parades down it and everything. So I was gonna ask about that, and then I had another item I wanted to ask about, if we could look at, and this is just really quick. When we were doing the Al Fresco Dining Ordinance, I noticed at the end of the paperwork that Connor gave us, that there is actually a code in Oroville Municipal Code that makes it illegal or not, it's not, it's against the code to place any merchandise outside the front of your store, at all. A sandwich board sign, table chairs. A sandwich board sign, table chairs, a plant, anything like that. And no one follows that ordinance, because the culture that we have is wonderful. They do put everything out on the front, and I think we all love it, and they do it responsibly. So I would like to look particularly at this ordinance and change it, and make it validate the culture that's happening now in our downtown safely. And we can talk about it. But you know, it should just be in the hours that they're open, and you have to keep public right away. Something is simple.
Yeah, I've seen that.
In our little downtown, I haven't seen one abuse, but?
We do allow A-frame signs, so that code section does state, "Any and all merchandise, blah, 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 shall be prohibited." In our new sign code that we did when I first joined back in with the city, and Dawn was with us, we did allow A-frame signs in our sign code to be permitted in the DHO public right away. So that is allowed within our sign code, that's okay. It's just not referenced properly.
But the merchandise is something that all of our shops do. I just want to have us look at it.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, because it says, "Except as provided in this chapter and some section in our zoning code." I don't know what's in any of those, so I, so I don't know what's, I don't know what's exempt, yeah.
Anything that pertained to it.
So Connor, will you clarify that, and maybe send us a memo that we can pass out to the Planning Commission?
Yes, sir. I can do that.
About the sandwich board, or?
About that code reference in the section, and how it is being implemented.
Yep.
Before I hit the bell on closing the meeting, I want to do this. I don't know, is this a permanent thing?
This helps me to stay organized, and hopefully all of you as well during the meeting. Because we have black folders, I will stock them every meeting.
So is this our new logo? I'm sorry.
No, it is not. This is a very old, old packet that we've had around for many, many years. So Carl, I have a staff report, if that's all right with you?
I don't know. Should we let him have it?
Let's hear it.
Yes. He always has important things to say.
All right, so many of you do not know Kayla Reister. She is our new Assistant City Clerk, sitting next to me. She's replacing Jackie, who's moved on. So she came to us from the county, and she's very experienced, so we'd like to welcome her to staff.
Welcome. Thank you. Good job. Really good job.
For those of you who haven't met Patrick Pyatt yet, he is the new Community Development Director for the city. Carl has not. And then, starting tomorrow, I'll be spending two and a half weeks in Italy with my wife. So I will miss the next DRC meeting. I'll miss some public notice requirements and such. And so we have recruited Mark Wolf, sitting behind me, who is an experienced planner from Chico, who knows better than I all of these processes and everything. And he will be handling the planning function in my absence, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
And thank you, Mark.
Yeah, thank you. Wes needs a vacation. Well deserved.
Okay. I'll be on a bus with 40 of my closest friends. Oh, there's more. Sorry. So upcoming for the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, the DRC on July 13th, not July 13th, October 12th, is that the day? There will be a use permit for the Rescue Mission Pallet Shelter Project. Many of you have heard that. They want to put a 30 or 40-person pallet shelter down at the Rescue Mission. The city is working very closely with them. The city has helped them get, I think it's a $1.7 million grant in order to enable this project. Technically, they do need a use permit in advance of that, so that will be coming to DRC, and Mark will be presenting that. Also, the county has a, is in the process of purchasing the Feather River Park District headquarters that is on Mitchell and Feather River Boulevard. And it's, I think it's a six-acre site or something. So the county is actually purchasing that, and they're going to turn it into one of their facilities that offers services and counseling and other kinds of services. And they will be needing a use permit, and we'll be bringing that to you in October. Mark hasn't heard about that yet, but he'll be doing a staff report for that as well.
How long are you gonna be gone?
Also, at the DRC, we'll be talking about the ADU ordinance, the Proposed ADU Ordinance Update for State Code, and LARC will be presenting that as well. October 26th, Planning Commission will be the aforementioned Rescue Mission and the use permit for the county building. Ruddy Creek's tentative map is about to expire, so you'll have a tentative map extension to this? Not Ruddy Creek. This will be the first time. And then the three ordinances, the Food Truck Village probably will just be a discussion item again, but the Oak Tree Mitigation Ordinance and the ADU Ordinance, if it's not too controversial, will be coming to you. In other news, the DRC reviewed a luxury, very large, 150-some-odd-space RV park at Nelson and Highway 70, the northeast corner of that interchange, northwest corner of that interchange. And it's adjacent to the swimming pool and the school that's there. This was a preliminary review by the Development Review Committee, so Terry, this is the kind of thing you'll be looking at now. The applicant is preparing a use permit, and they expect to file that by the end of October for this project. Council has, City Council has remanded the branding project back to a subcommittee, not adopted a final city brand yet, and it won't be that gold folder. They've given this committee 60 days to either recommend a new logo or to keep the originally proposed logo. The normal November commission meeting, should I go ahead and, okay, is Thanksgiving Day. But if you look at the schedule that's been posted, it will be the week before that. It will be November 16th, Thursday. So this is a notice for you guys that we'll be moving that meeting forward a week. Then the Al Fresco ordinance will be moving forward to the City Council, unless this commission wants to hold it a little bit to answer Natalie's questions.
But it didn't go with the Al Fresco ordinance, right? That's a whole separate ordinance about putting things in front of your store.
Okay, okay. We'll handle it that way. So the Al Fresco ordinance will move to the City Council in late October or November. That's it.
Okay. I want to bring anything up in better luck, because we gotta bring them down here in the fridge. All right.
Okay, thank you.